Good evening. I'd like to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order this September 17th. Please bear your heads and pray with me. Gracious Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you bestowed on Columbia County. Thank you for those who serve us. We thank you for the firemen, the Sheriff's Department that provide safety. Father, I just thank you so much for all you've done for this county. I pray that you'd be with us now. Bless this meeting, bless the decisions that have been made. Christ's name, amen. Please stand for the pledge. Let you lead. I'll let the record show that we have a full quorum of Commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting in your booklet, number 3rd. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Motion to accept.
Second, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Have one item that's been added to the agenda. Appointment to the Planning Commission, that'll become I-2A. And just want to welcome you to this, to the commission meeting. Also, I know we have some, a couple of youth service, not youth service, leadership kids here tonight. So, why don't you guys stand up and tell us your name and your school? Welcome. We're glad you're here. Again, we just thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. This meeting will be recorded and you'll be able to see it online at the right time, I guess within 24 hours-ish. Is that how that works now? Whatever, Mr. Patriss. Would you have some special recognition today as our Employee of the Month? Ask Vice Chairman Richardson, Deputy Employee of the Month, Van Williams. I'm sorry, Van Williams. I just said month. Probably month. Yeah, I know, that was pretty bad.
This is Mr. Van Williams and he is from Water Utility. Mike over there. Off with. Oh. That'll work every time. Well, first off, I want to thank all in, everybody in Water Department. All take for granted. Walk in. Always there. What y'all do and... But his bio, Van Williams has been employed for almost nine years in the mechanical department with Water Utility. Dedicated father to five children and a devoted grandfather. Avid Steelers fan. Don't know about that one, but...
Last week, anyway.
And is dedicated to Columbia County's resource. Middle, he says, "Van Williams has been an integral part of the Water Utility and the mechanical department for the last nine years. Is a true representation of pride. Exceptional employee, rarely takes off and is always ready to work. Recently, Van postponed his vacation in order to take care of a major job at one of the wastewater plants. Ever backs down from a challenge. Coworkers rely on him daily. Listens to both small jobs and large projects all over the water and wastewater plants, booster stations and lift stations, along with everything. Recently promoted to supervisor. Played into the position without any other... First, many call, they need help to fix it. Even though he is a hard worker, he always has a good attitude, takes his time to bond and have a good laugh with his fellow coworkers in all departments. Ever meeting a stranger, does a great job. Everyone feel welcome at the end. And is a true man, work speaker. Compliment."
I couldn't concur more. Van, you know, he's been putting in for Employee of the Month himself for every month for now. I said, "What took y'all so long?" "Oh, did you?" But he's always got the greatest sense of humor. He's always got a chuckle and a laugh. And if he's not picking at you, then you know where you stand with him. You kind of want him to be picking at you. Yeah, that's right. I was driving back from somewhere on Furious Ferry Road a couple of weekends ago, Sunday afternoon. I went past one of our major lift stations on Furious Ferry Road, Jones Creek Lift Station, huge pumping station. And it's a wastewater pumping station. And who'd I see walking up the driveway to get back in his truck after checking it on a Sunday was Van. And I thought, you know, always there. Like, Commissioner Richardson says, you know, you take it for granted and the water's always there. The magic flush. And that's part of the reason that you have those benefits is because of this Van right here. He is the magic flush. So, with that said, I said, "Van," I said, "is there anything you really want me to tell anybody while I'm up there?" He said, "Well, tell them I got the biggest wrenches in Columbia County." And he works with some mighty big wrenches on some mighty big pumps with some mighty big hammers. He's a big man and he does a big job. We are really proud of him, but I appreciate you.
Thank you, Van. Next up on the agenda, we have the Executive Director, Shelley Blackburn of the Columbia County Convention and Visitors Bureau to give us highlights of their accomplishments.
I'd like to follow, but I'm going to try my best. And thank you all for your time tonight. So, I'm here just to offer a brief update of what's been going on with the convention and visitors bureau and what we have coming down the pipeline in the next year. Obviously, all of our efforts would not be possible without our incredible staff. And Ms. Ashley Swain with us tonight. She's our Associate Director of Sales and Marketing, newest member of our staff, Ms. Tara Bond Sales. She's our part-time marketing assistant. Awesome. Also, these remarkable people who serve and volunteer as our Board of Directors and keep us in line and oversee our day-to-day operations. I'll jump straight into the numbers because my time's limited here tonight, but the most recent numbers we have from the Department of Economic Development are from 2017. But we know that direct tourist spending in that year was up by 4% over 2016, just shy of $147 million. Local tax revenues were over $4 million. That was an increase of 3% over 2016. And payroll for 2017 was at $28 million, which was up 4.8%. So, significant growth from 2016 to 2017. Because of the dollars that were spent by tourists in Columbia County, we know that each Columbia County household saved $226 that year. So, some significant information for you. We do say in tourism, we're the only industry that imports temporary taxpayers. So, we know that's important to you as well. So, we're continuing to do that. Some additional stats for you. Our hotel-motel tax collection is up 1.5%, occupancy up over 6%, and revenue per available room, 5.8%. As you all know, social media is a huge part of tourism marketing. And so, we have some great numbers to share with you tonight. And we have seen 19.3% growth through Facebook, 36.8% through Instagram, and Twitter, 8.5%. Great strides in the social media marketing world. Middle of March this year, we unveiled a brand-new website, which we find is much more visitor-friendly. Over the last six months, we've had over 25,000 viewers to that site. And the average visit duration to our website is nearly two and a half minutes. So, people are intrigued by what they're learning about Columbia County, staying on our site, and they're finding out more about the area. Last year, when we came to present to you to give our update, we unveiled our brand-new Stay-Awhile campaign, which featured Charles Kelly in our video. And so, we thought this would be a great opportunity to come back and share some of the success of that campaign. We're year one into the two-year campaign. But some important information we want to share with you. So, we've done some paid digital advertising through in-stream video and YouTube. Had over 100,000 impressions there. And an important fact to share with you, too. Over 51,000 people have watched that video in its entirety, the entire one-minute video. So, we're excited and proud of that statistic as well. On Facebook alone, this video has been viewed over 26,000 times and it's had over 5,000 engagements. Because of our initiatives with this campaign over the last year, our Visitor's Guide digital views have increased by 20%. And our request for a mailed Visitor's Guide has increased by 49% in one year. Some additional great news, our e-newsletter subscriptions increased by a whopping 62%. We also unveiled a really heavy digital ad campaign with the Stay-Awhile concept. And we had over 200,000 impressions and nearly 7,000 people that clicked through to our website to learn more about Columbia County. Signage and wayfinding, we are wrapping up Phase 2. So, we hope in the next couple of weeks, we will actually have the concepts in hand and hopefully we'll be moving forward with that. We thank you all very much for your support of this initiative and to all of the county employees who have been involved with that, in Grove Town and City of Harlem as well that have helped to get us to this point. But we are moving along very well. Hopefully, we'll have some signs in the ground sooner rather than later. Estimated economic impact. So, in the fiscal year 1819, the CVB either booked, sponsored, or serviced 34 events. And so, we were able to work with those events to help set up hotel room blocks and we were able to gauge the economic impact. And so, we estimate that to be at 4.1 million. Those events range from sporting events to expos to meetings, you name it. So, a variety of events. But out of those 34 events, we estimate economic impact at over 4 million. What's ahead. We've had a big year in 18, 19, 20 shaping up to be even better. We're really excited to open a brand-new hotel this year. It's slated to open December 15th. That's the Avid Hotel in Grove Town. That'll add 95 rooms to our inventory. We're really excited to have that. As I mentioned, the Stay-Awhile campaign is a two-year campaign. We wrapped up year one and we are continuing this year with that campaign. And we will be updating our annual Visitor's Guide, obviously continuing initiatives with signage and wayfinding and our hospitality committee. We are partnering with the Development Authority of Columbia County and the county PR office to develop a new film Columbia County website. So, we hope to have that up and running in the coming months. Event, meeting, recruitment, and sponsorship, as always, we will continue to do that. We are in the final stages of developing a paddle trail. So, we hope to launch this in late winter, early spring. So, there's more coming on that. We hope to share that with you very soon. Of course, updating our strategic plan this year. One of the most important things we'll be working on this year is we'll be hosting the Georgia Department of Economic Development for our Tourism Product Development Team. And thank you Chairman Duncan for writing a letter on our behalf to petition for that. We'd love to tell you a little bit more about what that will be. So, we would show you a video about what's coming. Our good friend, Mr. Pat Wilson, the Commissioner of the Georgia Department of Economic Development.
In tourism, when we speak of our products, we're talking about natural resources, cultural resources, lodging, and attractions. Our Tourism Product Development Program empowers and assists communities. They do this by helping communities identify, develop, and get their experiences visitor-ready. Back in 2009, we established the Tourism Product Development Program. TPD teams have been so successful in assembling experts of all backgrounds. In the first 10 years, we've conducted 70 resource team visits. In addition, nearly $1.5 million in grants has been distributed. As Georgians, sometimes we don't realize what we have in our own backyards. Local assets in rural Georgia communities can translate into one-of-a-kind experiences. Supporting business startups and expansions, especially small businesses, is a real focus for us here at the Georgia Department of Economic Development. Over the past 10 years, our Tourism Product Development Program has championed rural Georgia. And this program helps communities uncover their future.
Really big initiative for us in the next... We're coming in in May and then several months after that, they will come back with a proposed plan of how we can enhance our current tourism product and potentially develop new product development. So, we thank you in advance for your support of that. And we'll keep you updated as we move forward with the Georgia Department of Economic Development on this visit. That concludes my report. I hope I got that in five minutes. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take those at this time.
Shelley, what's the, do we know the specific economic impact of the Augusta Nationals' foray into Columbia County at a champions retreat? Do we have any idea?
Two. So, we actually see a weekly report from a company called Smith Travel Research, which reports hotel-motel data. And so, we have those specific numbers, which we compare to the same time period of last year. And we did see an increase, hotel-motel occupancy and lodging that week as opposed to prior to that. So, we know there was an impact in that regard.
Good. And I know that new Avid Hotels, 95 rooms, that puts us 1,200 in how many rooms?
Over, will be over 1,200, so...
And most people don't know we have over 1,200 hotel rooms in Columbia County.
Right. So, we're thrilled to have another property right out there.
And Mr. Wilson was wearing a master's shirt.
He was. Did you like that? We didn't plan that.
Thank you, Shelley.
Any other questions? Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Up on the agenda, we have two people have asked to speak, and I'm going to move those to the, actually to the item when we actually deal with the others. So, I'll take us down to, A, the Proclamation for National Surgical Technologists Week. Nicole Bates here.
You didn't show up?
Alrighty.
Well?
Go ahead and do the presentation, anyways.
Yeah, I'll do the presentation and read the proclamation. This is, Nicole left a very nice summary and of what National Surgical Technologists Week is about. As an estheticist, she didn't need to write this to me like I was a fifth grader because I fully understand what these people do. They provide safety and excellent technical expertise in the operating room. Find yourself or a family member in the balance. They're one of the four people who are going to be in the room who are going to help your family member in a dark moment. So, she says that they help surgeons anticipate the needs of the surgeon. I know firsthand that they have mastered the art of giving a surgeon what he needs instead of what he asks for on a daily basis. So, I'll read the proclamation. Without further ado, Mr. Chairman, "Whereas for over 60 years, surgical technology has grown to meet the ever-increasing demand for well-educated, highly skilled, and versatile surgical technologists. And whereas surgical technologists are entrusted with the lives and well-being of patients and provide a critical service during surgical procedures. Whereas over 90,000 surgical technologists nationwide are an integral part of the surgical team, committed to providing the highest quality of surgical care to patients. And..." Here, Nicole Bates, are you, ma'am? Okay. "...whereas surgical technologists strive to prevent life-threatening surgical site infections and maximize patient safety. And whereas certified surgical technologists graduate from an accredited program and receive certification conferred by the National Board of Surgical Technology and Surgical Assisting based upon passage of the national examination. And whereas the surgical technologist motto, "Agora Primo, the patient first," reflects total commitment to patient safety and advocacy. Now therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2019 as National Surgical Technologists Week in Columbia County, Georgia. Signed and sealed this 17th day of September 2019."
That to Ms. Bates when we meet. Onto the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have items that are placed on the consent agenda. They've received the necessary votes in committee placed on this agenda. If it meets with your approval, we'll pass these with all in one vote. Motion to do so unless you have changes. We're moved. Discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries? Back to you, Mr. Galius on the surgical.
Yes, sir. Proclamation for National Surgical Technologists Week. I make a motion to proclaim the week of September 17th as a National Surgical Technologists Week in Columbia County, Georgia.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries?
I make a motion to approve the major PUD revision to revise the building setbacks for property located at tax map 074H to reduce the side building setback to five feet, subject to the conditions enumerated in the September 5th, 2019 Commission Report.
Second. Doctor?
This is one where we had a major issue with staff making a mistake. A gentleman came in applying for a permit to put accessory structure in. Staff signed off on the placement of this building as it sits. So, this is exactly where staff said to put it. We were actually received a complaint about a different residence. While we were there looking at it, code enforcement saw this one, went out and looked at it, a notice of violation. This is to correct a problem that we made. So, we put it exactly where staff said to, and it was wrong.
Any questions or debates? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request for a fee waiver.
Second. Same building. All in favor, raise your right hand. It was our fault.
I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from P1 and R2 to S1 for property located at tax map 073C, 038D, 036, and 128 for a proposed athletic field gymnasium and associated parking, subject to the conditions enumerated in the September 5th Planning Commission Report.
Second. Doctor?
This is a rezoning to put in a athletic field, a gymnasium, be done in phases. We do have a conditional here that we'd like to point out that the lighting for these fields has to stay on-site, has to be a one-foot candle or less at the property lines. So, that's what we're going to look for. There also was a time limit set on the gravel road, the gravel parking, the... Search across the street, their facilities.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe we have a, Blake Sewer wanted to speak on this next item, if I'm right.
Excellent.
Next one. One. I apologize.
I make a motion to approve the request for a major S1 revision for tax map 070, parcel 003H, to revise the allowed uses for the property.
Any discussion? Anybody raise your right hand? Now, Blake Sewer, do you hear? Please state your name and address for the record, sir, in five minutes.
Hi. My name is Blake Sewer. My wife and I, my wife Elizabeth and I have lived at 725 Jones Creek for over 30 years. My wife is a retired schoolteacher from Columbia County and I'm a retired program manager from... I'm objecting to the backyard fence on Mr. Brown's property on 708 Whittington's Ridge, item 4 on page 6 of the agenda. This fence faces my backyard. It is several feet over the six-foot fence ordinance for our PUD. It has a nine-foot on one end and an eight-foot on the other end. For nearly 30 years, a six-foot fence has stood on the same property. Every residence that has the same property has lived in the same property, respected the fence covenant of the neighborhood and the PUD fence ordinance of Columbia County, not Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown decided he wanted a fence several feet over the neighborhood covenant and ordinance of Columbia County. Did Mr. Brown respect his neighbors and ask them if they had any problem with an eight-to-nine foot fence on his hillside? No, he didn't. Did Mr. Brown ask permission from our HOA? No, he didn't. I have an email from Tripp Nanny of our HOA stating that Mr. Brown applied for the replacement fence, not mention anything about changing the height. Did Mr. Brown check with Columbia County and the fence ordinance for our PUD? No, he did not. He wanted a higher fence, so he ignored all the regulations and did not care if anyone could complain. If they did, he was vice president of our homeowner's negotiation and would get approval after the fact. Did Mr. Brown have achieved the same amount of privacy he claims he needed and still follow the six-foot ordinance? Yes, several ways. First, he has a deck that is raised above the ground level of his pool. He could remove the deck if privacy is important to him. Second, he has several feet of unused property behind the deck. Because of the deck, the property is difficult to reach. It is not used for or landscape. By simply moving the fence up the slope, two feet, property that he didn't use anyway, he would have gained more height than complied with the ordinance. According to our HOA, Tripp Nanny, again, the reason Mr. Brown did not choose to move the fence was that he wanted a space to blow his leaves instead of collecting and disposing them. Not a reason to give someone a nine-foot fence. We were told that his sloped property is a reason for variance. We haven't seen those documents at all, but that's what we were told. It also doesn't make sense to give someone a higher fence because their property is slightly slanted, when you could move their fence up the slope. In conclusion, there are no valid reasons Mr. Brown should get a PUD variance for his property. There has been a six-foot fence on his property nearly 30 years. Mr. Brown not respect his neighbors, the neighborhood covenants, and the ordinance from Columbia County. He had several options available to gain more privacy while adhering to the PUD ordinance. Citizens of Columbia need to count on their elected officials to uphold the county ordinance. And those who don't. It is these ordinance that help make Columbia County a great place to live. Please uphold the PUD ordinance and do not grant Mr. Brown a variance. This is the only fair conclusion. Mr. Brown needs to comply with the fence ordinance and other ordinance that he ignores. This is not the first time Mr. Brown has ignored the rules of Columbia County. Thank you for your time. You have any questions?
Sir, you mentioned that the HOA president, Tripp Nanny, tell me what his response to you was?
Well, he had several responses. So, one was, he talked to Mr. Brown and asked him to move it. Mr. Brown said, "No, he wanted that space to blow his leaves in." He also asked him a couple other questions. Is that the one you were...
That's what I was referring to because I'm looking here. According to the minutes of the planning and zoning meeting, Mr. Nanny spoke and says that the Architectural Control Committee for Jones Creek met at the time this was built and gave unanimous approval on two separate site visits for the project.
That was when he was the architect. He's now the, he's now the president. He was the, he and several members looked at it, yes. And I challenged that. And I went to a regular meeting. I challenged it and they said, "We're not going to change it." And I said, "Well, I don't think it complies." And they said, "Well, you're welcome to go to the county and check it out."
But the HOA board told him it was okay?
I do not know that. I do not know that.
Mr., if I may, Mr. Seaworth, this trip answered to you on May 14th, in a message to you that we do not have a problem with the height of Mike's fence, really looks better than the fence he had before. Has there been any subsequent conversation or meeting about the height of the fence with the homeowners association?
Yes, I did go, and I made plea to the group, and I was, said, I get you're going to have to go. I did. And I found out that there were other things, they said that the county says there is no record of someone from the county going there saying that the fence is illegal. No, although they claim. And it's your people that told me that. Any people and your other group that goes around and checks the things.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, I got ahead of myself, I shouldn't have explained it before. I think it's been explained.
Very good job explaining it.
Hey, well, you heard it.
Is Mr. Brown here? Is anyone else here just to speak?
Anything you want to add? Have a question, Mr. Brown?
I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision to revise the building setbacks for property located at 708 Whittington Ridge for tax map 077H016, to reduce building setbacks for an existing pool, deck, and fence.
Second. The other discussion or debate? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item, Karen Fogg, are you here? Well, the applicant is asked to postpone this, or to, what am I looking for?
Table.
Withdraw or table this motion. If you'd like to speak, you can, but it's not going to be voted on tonight.
Depends on her motion, so.
You want to go ahead and make the motion?
The motion, so we can talk about it. I make a motion to table to the next commission meeting, the request for a rezoning of RA to R2 for tax map 053004, in order to develop a residential neighborhood on site. So, the motion is to table it until the next commission.
Be October 1st.
Yes.
I'll second that, so, now you know. Matt, you want to explain?
So, this is a, it is a development that's looking to go a straight R2 zoning. Planning Commission did vote to recommend denial. The property owner, I'm sorry, the developer is looking at other options of changing the zoning to R1, keep it RA, who knows, he's going back with his engineer to look at it and see if it's still a feasible project, so giving him time to come up with a new plan.
Or wait till then?
That be enough? We have to complete?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, come on.
Okay, well, come on down, please.
Yes, ma'am, it'll be public comment.
Okay. Matt, please state your name and address for the record. Five minutes, five minutes when you.
I'm Karen Fogg, I live at property 4,000 Greenbrier Drive, Grove Town, 0813, and I wanted to come to represent, you know, myself, the neighbors on Greenbrier Drive, Rockford Road, and just that surrounding probably mile to multiple miles around this 193-acre proposed development. My property specifically bumps up against the development along Uche Creek, so we will share some of that access and ownership of the creek. And I came a little bit better prepared tonight than I did to the last one, so that I can be as exact as possible and not take up too much time. So, I'll just read through my concerns and the concerns of the neighbors, and then quickly give, you know, the recommendations, because I know that growth is going to happen. Concerns regarding the specific change from RA to R1 would be, you know, the difference between two-and-a-half acre parcels versus acre parcels, which is what they're essentially proposing, that the minimum would drop down to as low as an acre per parcel. And what this means in like a neighborhood or a development is that instead of approximately 70 houses on this land, it would be they're looking at 355 houses, which is a huge difference between, and how it impacts our lives there, you know, quality of life, you know, roads and all of that kind of thing. Excuse me, let's see here. I don't believe that the infrastructure is ready to handle that number of, that increase of population, and that actually came out the last meeting, the sewage and the water is not ready for it. And, you know, what have we looked into how this would impact the current schools? I have young children, you know, Uche Creek is already very full, Harlem Elementary just opened up, you know, what impact would an additional, you know, the difference between the number of houses that they put on this land, you know, if it's going to be developed either way, you know, is a very high increase of population, you know, and the impact on our local school system. Have we, have they looked into that to see what that impact would be for all of us? Also, you know, the concern of the neighbors is the potential expansion of the Grove Town city limits. Again, that this has happened, in my understanding, at least twice within the last 30 years, where it has continued to grow and consume more of the county, and we're very concerned that if this zoning is changed from RA to R1, that that would again give cause to continue to expand out the city limits, which is not something that those of us who want to live, you know, in the county and in the country life would like. Also, we have concern over our home values, you know, many of us have multiple acres that we're living on, we have nice, updated homes that we're living on, and, you know, the last thing that, you know, we would want to see is a neighborhood of this size and, you know, number of homes come in that isn't really comparable to the homes that we're currently living in. So, we just ask that the developers take into consideration, you know, the impact on, you know, our home values that are already there. And would like to just add that, you know, keeping the two-and-a-half acre per parcel acreage helps to preserve the ambiance and lifestyle that current residents expect and strongly desire to have for decades to come. The main recommendations I'd have, you know, to the developer or the builder is, you know, to build a neighborhood that stays residential agriculture, incorporating more green space than what they have currently put on their plan, which is only 10%. Most of that is the land that can't be developed, that is in the flood zones and the flood plains back by Uche Creek. In the layout that they proposed, there really was very limited green space in the neighborhood. The homes are right on top of each other, from what I could tell from their line drawing, you know, there, there's only so much you can really see, right? Without more information, but that is what it appeared to be. Make it a place where people want to come and, you know, make it their forever home, even if they know they're going to move on to another base at some point, their plan is to come back and live here, retire here, this is their home that they want to have, versus what we often see. I am a veteran, so I have seen this at multiple bases I've been at, the neighborhoods that are directly outside of a base will ultimately become very transient places that do not stay sustainable with high quality, and I would like to see something better for Columbia County.
The neighborhood in which you live, is it, are they two-and-a-half acres?
Well, mine is four acres.
Four acres.
And I think I am one of the largest, larger lots on the road itself, but they range all the way from probably two-and-a-half to, I mean, 10, 15 acres.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ma'am, while you're standing there, can I ask Mr. Schlauchert to clarify something? You mentioned RA to R1.
Right, you said that a few times, I was going to point that out, it's actually R2.
Oh, I am so sorry, yes.
No, no, that's okay, I just, I just wanted to be clear on the record and you to understand what the proposal was.
Yes, I was misspeaking, I apologize. But that doesn't change that the main difference being that two-and-a-half acre minimum for RA versus the, I think it's 10,000 square foot quarter acre for an R2.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me speak and for letting it be on the record, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, there's a motion to table this till the next meeting? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand?
Okay, this next one's a long one, so hang in there with me. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at 590 Washington Road Property located at tax map 066008B, to revise the concept plan, building sizes, and building setbacks for the previously approved site with the following conditions. Number one, all truck traffic, including all deliveries and emptying of dumpsters, must occur after 8:00 a.m. Number two, the use of IPS metal panels shall require review and approval by staff and the Planning Commission prior to approval of permits for buildings on that site. Location of metal panels is encouraged to be on the rear only, but may be altered, depending on the type of panels. Number three, the front setback is only reduced for the proposed retaining wall shown on the concept plan submitted with this application.
Second. Blocker?
This is a revision to a previously approved PUD. They are reducing the size of storage and increasing the size of the retail commercial, so, something the residents out there expressed when the original zoning came through, so they're actually going in the direction the residents weren't.
Questions?
Question. Will their conditions from previous zoning, are they included also with?
So, they're included. The conditions that are in there are, the first are repeats from the previous, last one is.
The other questions? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Cares?
Okay. I make a motion to approve the request for variances to Section 90-98, List of Lot and Structure Requirements, Section 90-140, Landscaping, Section 90-132, Nonconforming Uses of Land and Structures, and Section 90-147G11D, Use Provisions for Tax Map 078C and Parcel 111A, to reduce the building setbacks for existing building, to maintain the existing landscape, and to allow the carport to remain in the current location, subject to the conditions enumerated in the September 5th Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is Washington Road at the intersection of Flowing Wells Road, there's a car lot, existing car lot there. The owners of the car lot actually hired a company to come put a carport behind their building. They thought they were doing right, they thought the carport company was doing their thing, but they didn't know was that carport company did not get permits, they did not get the variances, so this is to allow that carport to remain. Carport stays where it is, it's a nonconforming use, the lot does not meet the proper sizes, the landscape doesn't match, basically allowing them to keep their carport with a gate in front of it. Yes, vote it stays, a no vote, it has to go. That's correct. And then, anything else that would change, they'd have to come back again in front of this board, only approving this.
Again, there are, there are a lot of issues with this property.
Majority of the lot used is actually CSX property they lease with, but their stuff on CSX property.
They are rearranging chairs on Titanic here. So, what's it going to hurt?
Any other off-the-wall comments? Eight? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand?
I make a motion to approve the request for a variances, Section 90-135, signs, for tax map 078138G, in order to increase the allowed building signage. You know what, this is the one I was.
I was going to say, I.
I apologize, this was one I need to recuse myself of, because I just realized, in my day job, we build in this, on this lot, so I need to recuse myself and pass that on to my vice chair of the Development Engineering Services Committee, Commissioner Allen, I apologize.
That's all right, ma'am, you made the notes, no, I've got it, you wrote it down and told me, but I figured you changed your mind. Okay. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance, Section 90-135, signs for tax map 078138G, in order to increase the allowed building signage for the site, subject to the conditions enumerated in the September 5th, 2019 Planning Commission Report.
Second. Blocker?
This is for a proposed earth fair in the Mullins Colony Shopping Center, left of the Belk. They are a good ways away from the road, they're asking for some increase in signage to visible from the road. Staff has agreed that 300 square foot would be a great number for them, for the maximum, for the principal wall sign, miscellaneous building signage be increased to 40 square feet. That's not what they asked for, they asked for more than that. Where they put it, it'd be up to them, they can pick and choose. That would basically give them the earth fair sign, the tomato on the left side of the building, and then, can't see it, but right through here, well, it's not drawn, right through there, there's a canopy that has some wording on there, they could get that. They have to look at this sign here, that could be turned into a window sign and not require variance, they could just move it, its location, and wouldn't require that variance. So, not everything they asked for, but it's what staff thinks is right, double what everybody else has, well, close to double, about double, well, about double what everybody else in that shopping center has, based on their location. But also, we'll have several businesses out front. It will. Blocking. That's correct. Full development, it's going to be hard to see this building.
Other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Or with one abstention?
Sorry for that confusion, I just got excited reading all my, I think I got one more. I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 19-14, Amending Chapter 18, Article 10, Wireless Infrastructure Right-of-Way, and to be effective the day after this second reading.
Second.
This is a ordinance that we wrote, it was Senate Bill 66. Basically, we're following state law, we did pass that on to Mr. Driver, he did get some comments, I'm going to let him address a couple of changes from when y'all saw it committee, we did receive requests from AT&amp;T, make two changes. Driver, you'd like to address it?
Invite stand-up if he wants to talk about it, otherwise, I'll just summarize. Two changes all have to do with undergrounding, requiring underground utilities for small cell infrastructure. One is literally just a word change from specified to designated, I don't think it has great significance, I don't have an issue with that. The other is, in areas that undergrounding is required, what their burden is to ensure that it won't work, that it has to go above ground. The current language that y'all had is the highest burden, legal burden that you could have, they asked for us to lower that, it was clear and convincing. They asked for any evidence, I've sort of gone a middle ground and said sufficient evidence, that it's more likely than not would not work underground.
Efficient evidence of this more likely than?
Well, so, if you want the exact language.
No, 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 I mean, if that's, that's it, that's fine.
That only applies to areas designated by the commission as undergrounding areas, the plaza, you don't want to put everything underground and then small cell carriers to come in and put poles everywhere.
So, I'm sort of abbreviating when I say word, the language is, by clear and convincing evidence that undergrounding will effectively prohibit, prohibit the provision of service in question.
That sounds a little more legalese, okay.
This is the first reading of an ordinance.
Know any times that that would come into play, or not, or?
Sure.
One abstention? For the record, Stan Shepherd with AT&amp;T, I actually live at 366 Farmington Drive in Evans, to ask, answer your question, Chair, Commissioner Richardson, there are times that history is concerned about, that we just want to be able to prove the case, that if the undergrounding, because a lot of the undergrounding here, it may be underground on the facility, but the pole itself, of course, for wireless is going to have to go above ground. So, there could be times to where we prove, and fine with the law, again, SB 66, agreed upon by many different parties, so we were fine with the law itself, terms within our legal department that this might stretch over, over the state law. But, the simple changes. But the simple changes that...
Page or question? All in favor, raise your right hand? First reading, let's read that again, right? There's another item on our agenda, I2A, about our Planning Commission.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Charles Evans, who represented District 1, and to appoint Jim Cox to represent District 1 Planning Commissioner, and to accept Chairman Duncan's appointment of Russell Wilder to serve as an at-large member of the Planning Commission. Wilder is here with us tonight. Wilder.
Were you there to defend yourself, Mr. Wilder?
Sure you want to do this.
Can you come up so we can grill you and ask you a bunch of questions and name an address, man?
Other...
I'd like to comment for Mr. Wilder. I'd have to say, voted citizen in this...
Oh, my goodness, yes.
The last two years, he's been in as many meetings as about as I have.
More than I have.
And to have somebody to come in to this seat, as important as it is, him to have the background from him as sitting in all these meetings, I don't know that we could...
And I'd like to say that Charles Evans, who is vacating this seat, he was appointed as a judge and trying, you know, everybody to be transparent and clear about their division of duties. He has stepped down. He enjoyed it and he appreciated. He sent us a letter of appreciation and allowing him to serve. And he wishes he could continue to serve, but in the interest of all involved, it was good for him to step aside. And we're lucky to have Mr. Wilder ready to jump in. And if we approve it, he'll be able to participate on Thursday.
Other discussion? All in favor of throwing Mr. Wilder to the wolves, raise your right hand? You're in. Legal matters?
No legal matters.
Request for review by committee, I still don't know.
I'm going to put one on there.
I appreciate that. Either take it off. Public comments, anyone? One executive issue, how would you like to deal with that?
Mr. Chairman, at your pleasure, we have one motion that is related to an employment agreement, and I feel like that could be read in public if you so desire. I make a motion to approve the employment agreement with Scott Sterling as Division Director for Planning Services at an annual salary of $120,000, a category D vehicle allowance and a smartphone allowance to be effective September 30th, 2019.
Second? Questions?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, that we have, as you know, we've had a pretty exhaustive search for a planning director. Mr. Sterling comes to us from one of our sister communities here. And it's the obvious next step for him. He has an extensive background in planning from really all different types of planning. He's very well-degreed and has an extensive knowledge of planning in general. And I think his mindset and approach to planning is much like ours. And I think he's going to be a great addition to our executive leadership team.
And in addition, he's here.
He is here, yeah.
Trying to hide back there, but there's no hiding anymore. All in favor, raise your right hand? Feel the noose tightening?
I think Mr. Ivy would like to speak to you before you leave, by the way.
Okay, is there anything else we need to deal with tonight? Next meeting is October 1st. Any other motions to be made?
Chairman, I make a motion, adjourn.
Second? All in favor, raise your right hand? We're out of here.